Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, we're really glad to hear today.
We are. We also have Julie and Colin here with us. Hey guys.
Hello.
Hi, good everyone.
We are super excited to be back after a week off. We had Thanksgiving here in the US. I had a nice time with with family. Hopefully wherever you are in the world, you are safe and warm and fed, as we certainly have been for the past week, maybe a little too much. I hope you guys had a great holiday if you celebrated. We're excited to be here today where in in keeping with talking about the holidays here, we're going to talk about how you can manage your business through the holidays without adding stress to your life. Make sure that you're getting all the things done that need to get done and setting yourself up for a great start to the coming new year. As you are coming in to join us, let us know in the chat where in the world you are and what your goals are for the rest of the year. We are in 2023, looking ahead to 2024 already. Tomorrow is December 1st. Can you believe it? What do you want to get done the rest of this year? Along with all of the other things that you know you have to do because it's a very busy season for most of us, right? So go ahead and head into the chat. We love hearing from you. We have some slides prepared for you here today. I would encourage you before we start getting into today's training for you to turn off your distractions, take your phone if you're not watching us on your phone and lock it away in a drawer, get a piece of paper out, right? Or if you really are like a fully digital animal, which full disclosure I am, you can open up a word processor or a notes app. You're going to want to follow along and take notes today. Because if you do, you're going to walk away with a plan that you'll feel really good about to move ahead into the new year. All right. So again, welcome. We are so excited to have you. We're going to pop out of video so that we can get into our slides that we have created for today's training. And of course, we'll come back to video as we always do. As soon as we are are done with our training here today, let me make sure I've got my Q and A open over here. Perfect. Okay, so it looks like you guys have already got a a busy schedule in place, right? We've got open houses this weekend. You've got events coming up. We've got Deanna wants to gain one new member each week. I love it. We're going to talk about how you can get that done today. Doing some math to get it done. I promise it's very simple math. Let's see what else. All right, we've got Norway, Minnesota, Philly, London. Welcome everybody. And here we go. Colette's here. I was wondering who is going to come and represent the warm climate? Because everybody else is frigid. It's frigid here in New York City where I am. We are so excited to have you here today. Again, we're going to be talking about how to stay on track with your business through the holiday season. So we will, oop, this is the wrong, uh, what's happening today. But like I mentioned, we are going to, sorry about that, you guys. I missed that edit on my deck here. We're going to first be talking about how to create a plan so that you can move into the holiday season with ease and comfort and clarity, knowing what you need to do next. We are also going to talk a little bit about our Black Friday specials, which have been extended into Cyber Week that you want to make sure that you are clear on. We'll take some questions on those if you have them. Uh, and we'll get some some clarity on those as well. So if you came here today and you are looking for help with something specific, please go ahead and add that to the Q and A, whether it pertains to today's topic or not. This is a live work session. We have Greg who created this platform here. We have Colin and Julie, who are absolute experts in the platform and how it works. So this is an opportunity for you to get live help and support. And if your need requires us to even get into your account, look at things together, work on things together. That is something that we can do here as well. So please go ahead and ask for that if you need it in the Q and A here on Zoom. If you're not watching us on Zoom, you are watching this as a replay or on YouTube or on our on our Facebook group, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession where you can join one of these live calls. This recorded Zoom, Donna asked, can it be put onto Facebook? In fact, this one is being recorded to Facebook right now. So there is actually a setting in Zoom where you can choose to broadcast to YouTube and to Facebook. Uh, and I think that there are other options there as well. I'm just less familiar with those. Now, if you would like to have one-on-one help on a live call as someone has signed up for today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. And if you are here and you are, um, you're here and you've signed up for your live session, definitely let us know in the Q and A that you are here and and we'll be sure to get to you after we get through today's training. If you are working on projects in your system and you want some hands, you want to be hands off, have it done for you. You can go to getoiling.com/conceiers to learn more about our team and all of the incredible ways that they can help you to save time. And time is money, uh, to get more done in your business. All right, now let's be real, get into the chat. Tell me how busy is your life right now? Or maybe you're thinking ahead to the coming month. How busy do you see yourself? No matter how you celebrate, the end of the year is often a frenetic time. And that is before we even start to talk about some of the emotional, you know, conflicts that can come up for us around holiday seasons, right? There is a lot to manage and handle, both on a practical, personal, spiritual, psychological level. Your schedule can get crazy. There's a lot going on, right? How busy is your life right now? So we are going to talk today about how we can get it all done without creating more stress. All right, so we are going to talk about how we can manage our time, how we can create sanctity in our schedule and how we can get done the things that need to get done without causing more stress. Because if we are, let's think about this for a moment, a little logic here. As brand partners, if we are a product of our product, we need to be putting a blissful front out to the world, right? So we need to make sure that how we're going about operating the work that we do is something that really helps to tell the story of what these products are capable of doing, right? So this is actually a really important thing for you to start incorporating into how you work is this time management that we'll be talking about today. Let's talk about how we can keep things humming through the holiday season. First things first, we're going to get clear on our goals for the rest of the year. And by the way, this is a high level overview of what we are going to be going over today. I'm going to be breaking these down into detail. Make sure that you have got a pen and paper handy. Not going to tell you to write anything down for this one for this slide, but in the subsequent slides, we are going to be working through that. So first thing we're going to be doing is getting clear on your goals for the rest of the year. We'll then set a plan that's based on those goals. And specifically that plan is going to have clear action steps. We'll then block off our work time apart from any other work that we need to do. And we know this time of year, there's a ton of stuff that we need to do. If people are coming to you, you're buying gifts, you're planning meals, uh, whatever that might look like. Make sure that we are blocking our work time off. We're going to batch our work as we work through our plan. We'll talk about what that means. And then we are going to talk about how we can sanctify our schedule, make our schedule something sacred. All right, so let us know in the chat if you haven't done so yet. What are your goals for the rest of the year? Share those. There is real value in stating your goals in an environment where others can see them. It really helps psychologically to flip a switch in your brain to keep you more accountable. So go ahead and put that goal into the chat here. Is your goal to stay afloat in your business? Do you want to, you know, maybe you've you've achieved a rank that you are pleased with for now, but you want to make sure that you aren't dipping going into the new year, that that your numbers aren't going down. Or maybe your goal going into this month is to see an increase. You want to see growth in your business. So whatever that looks like for you, write down what you know you want to accomplish for the next month. All right, and let's go high level with this, right? I want to maintain this level of OGV, this check, this rank. I want to grow to this level of OGV, this check, this rank. All right, there are plenty of other ways that we can state our goals. Obviously, we can say I want to, you know, get this one thing done, that other thing done, et cetera. But what we're talking about here, because we are again, looking into a very frenetic and busy and emotionally charged time of year, we want to get really simple with this. What do I want to get done um, in terms of my business? Do I want to grow it or do I want to keep it the same? What does that look like? And make sure that with your goals, you are being reasonable with yourself, keeping in mind what your other responsibilities are. To what extent are you already stretched with those responsibilities, right? It is better for you to have balance right now as you go and and juggle and manage all of the things you need to do, uh, than for you to try to pile on, right? So this might not, depending on who you are, how you manage stress and what you have on your plate. This might not be the best time of year to launch something new, to start something brand new. But with the right approach, you can set yourself up to launch into the new year with solid habits and systems so that you can really grow with momentum after the dust has settled, after everything has calmed down, as we get into the quiet of January and 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 moving into a new year with purpose, right? So with that goal set, let's create a plan. All right, I'm going to give you a couple of examples that we can use and a structure for setting your plans for the coming month. All right. Now, this is specifically for Young Living brand partners. If you have other businesses that you operate that are maybe adjacent to your oily business, then I would encourage you to check out our Attract Well platform, our training we're going to be doing at two o'clock Eastern today. We're going to be getting more into specific, um, you know, if you are a coach, a consultant, a creator, what that looks like for that type of business later today, if that is something that you are interested in. And you can go to attractwell.com/officehours to learn about that. But today, we are all young living right here on Get Oiling. All right. So we're going to have two examples here. Maintenance of your existing Young Living business and growth of your Young Living business. Right? These are going to be the the baselines that we are working from. First, we'll talk about a maintenance plan. This is for you if again, you are satisfied with your check for now, you just kind of want to keep things going at a normal pace. Maybe you have too much going on in your life otherwise. And you just want to make sure that while you are kind of stepping back from active growth in your business, that you are maintaining enough to keep things moving forward, right? So that you aren't going to see a dip in your results for having taken a step back, right? All right, so your maintenance plan is going to fall into three categories of activity. That's going to be engagement, your lead pipeline and your projects. All right, everything is going to follow, fall into one of these three categories, everything that you do. So the engagement part of your maintenance plan, uh, and a quick note here. For everything having to do with engagement, we want to make sure that we are batching our work and automating as much as possible so that we spend the least amount of time possible on activities in this category. This is often the category where we spend the most of our time. And it is a big reason why a lot of us hit plateaus, fall back and stall. Because this is some of the least profitable um, activities. These are some of the least profitable activities to spend your time on in your business. It doesn't mean they're not important. They are just less important than the others. Okay. So first, we've got our engagement with our team. And by team, I do mean your customers and your brand partners, so people who are already in the fold. Okay? So the first thing you want to do, and you're going to write this down, we're going to determine the number of emails per month or per week that we need to send out through the rest of the year. And that is to keep our team or our customers both engaged. Okay? This should look similar to what you're already doing. So if you're only sending something out once a month, you're going to put down one email. Because that's all you got to worry about, right? One, if that's what you're doing. This is because this is a maintenance plan. We aren't trying to ramp things up. We aren't trying to create a new habit, a new plan here. We want to keep things in a good place because they're in a good place already. So what have you been doing? How many emails is that per month or week? We're going to write that down. Then we need to determine what our care calls and direct outreach looks like. So reaching out to our brand partners, reaching out to our customers. How often are we doing that currently? Or how often do you want to make sure you are accountable, planning ahead? I know that I want to be reaching out to uh, ten of my customers or brand partners a week, et cetera, depending on where you're at, right? So determine the number of direct outreaches that you would be making on a weekly basis. Now, the other category of engagement here is for your audience. These are people who are not your customers or your brand partners. These are people who could become them, right? So we want to determine the number of emails that we're going to send again for the next month out to our list. Now, if you don't have a list, don't worry about this. If you are not currently mailing your list, you can go ahead and say, I know that I want to email them once a week and you could write down the number four for the number of emails you need to send to your audience. Entirely again, up to you. Go ahead and figure out what that number is. And then determine the number of posts you'll be making on your social accounts, uh, either per day or on a weekly basis. So figure out these numbers for these four things. How many emails are you sending to your team? How many emails are you sending to your audience? How many direct outreaches do you plan to make in the next month? How many posts per day or week? So you can calculate a total number of social posts you'll be making for the month. Total number of emails you'll be making for the month and the total number of direct outreaches you'll have as a goal on an ongoing basis. Clear so far? This is for you if you are looking to maintain your existing business because you are too busy with other things or you are focusing on something else and wanting to keep your, get uh, your Young Living business maintained. Now, your lead pipeline, this is the absolute most important part of your business, even if you are in a maintenance phase. All right, attrition is real in network marketing despite the fact that Young Living really does have the absolute best retention rates in the business. You still are going to have a leaky bucket bucket at some, to some degree in your business. And you want to make sure that you do have a constant flow coming into it, right? This work, if you are in maintenance phase, you're going to be in maintenance mode for the next month. This work should account for fifty percent of your time at least. The first number we're going to establish is the number of new customers or the number, the volume of OGV that you want to be creating. Maybe that's tied to a rank goal or maintain or maintenance of the rank that you have, whatever that looks like. You know that in order for you to maintain, you need to grow to this point or maintain this amount coming in. All right, so establish first, what is your goal number of new customers and OGV to maintain your business? Then you want to estimate the number of shares of Young Living you need to make in order to reach that goal. Right? So for one person to sign up, how many people do you need to share Young Living with? Okay. This all begins with a goal number of new customers. Then we're going to set the goal for the number of appointments we need to make, right? How many appointments do we need to make to be able to share, right? And then how many shares do we need in order to be able to reach that goal of those customers or OGV? Then you need to, again, working backwards here, how many conversations do you need to start in order to get those appointments to share and then to sign someone up? And then you want to set that goal number of conversations for how many times you are going to reach out to start or re-engage conversations with prospects on a daily or weekly basis, right? This is where we're kind of doing the math here to figure out how we should be spending our time. And this should be fifty percent of the time that we spend reaching out to starting conversations and re-engaging conversations with people who could become your next customer. All right, feel free to ask questions if there is any lack of clarity here for you on this topic. This is what it looks like to maintain your lead pipeline. Now projects, that's going to include creating stuff and get oiling, right? That's going to include making funnels or building courses or uh, creating a member area for your customers, et cetera, right? If you are in maintenance mode and you may choose to be in maintenance mode of your business because you want to be focusing more on your uh, on your get oiling system and and building out the digital stuff that you want so that you can run the business the way that you want to. This would work beautifully for you if that's a goal of yours. First, you want to specify the project or projects that you want to complete this month. If you do have a project in progress, um, that you want to prioritize, you could opt to choose that as well. From there, you want to determine based on this project, what is needed in order for you to complete it. So if you know that you want to create a lead generating funnel, then you're going to want to go and make sure that you know what you need. So I need to create a lead magnet. So that means I need to create maybe a PDF in Canva if that's how you want to do it. I need to create an email campaign. I need to create a landing page. And if I don't have a confirmation page, I need to create one of those. Right? And then I need to uh, find a way to uh, feature that maybe in my website menu or on my uh, website homepage. Right? So make a list of everything that is needed to complete that project. And if you are unclear, if it is something that is get oiling based, if you're unclear about what is needed to complete the project, definitely consult our support articles, check out the Success Academy or just shoot us an email and we're happy to outline what that looks like for you. So you're going to want to outline the steps or the elements that are required. We'll gather resources to help you stay focused. So this is ahead of time. Before you start doing the work, plan to gather the things that you know that you need. If you know that there is a resource bundle that you can claim, go ahead and claim it. If you have links to things that you want to reference, maybe a training that you want to follow along with as you complete your project, make sure you have the link for that. Get yourself prepared so that all of this stuff is in one place. Then you're going to want to break that project down into separate categories. And again, if you are creating something and get oiling, it's basically going to fall into one of three categories. That's going to be copy or the written words that you use, creation of images, and then going and putting that copy and image creation into designs uh, on pages or vaults, et cetera, in get oiling and setting all that stuff up together, right? So we're going to take our project, we're going to break it down into what's needed. Right? What do you need? What's your checklist for the project? What are the resources that I need? Gather those and then determine what this looks like, right? So again, if you are going to create a funnel, for instance, and that's a project that you're working on, you need to create um, those things that I've already listed off, right? The lead magnet, the campaign, et cetera. And then the types of work you're going to be engaging in are your copy. So what are the things that I know I want to say? Right? There's the images. So you aren't just going and and creating one thing and then a different thing, right? You're going into um, get oiling and you're trying to write something and you say, oh no, I need an image here, right? You can actually go in and and work in batches, right? So you can create all of your images in Canva and then you can create all of your copy with AI. And then you can go and set things up in your good oiling account, right? All right, uh, let me check out some uh, questions that are I see over here. Rebecca, I see you. Excited to work with you today. What is the link to add a parallel business to get oiling? Bridget, you actually don't need to link anything separately per se. If you do have an existing website for your other business, you can link that from anywhere that you can put a link, including in your menu on your site. But you can uh, also just run your parallel business with get oiling alongside your Young Living business. All right, uh, would appointments equal shared with and would the conversations for the last two also be the same? It depends, Alison. So um, yeah, we're going to, I'll I'll go over that with you here in just a second. So if your plan is to grow, who here, let me know in the chat, has a plan to grow? You know that you've got busy stuff happening in the next month, but you are excited to increase your business in the next month. Seeing some yes. All right, so this same as our maintenance plan, our growth plan is going to fall into those same three categories, engagement, lead pipeline and projects. Okay? So engagement, just like I mentioned before, this is where we want to really prioritize batching and automating. So if you're going to create your social media posts, sit down and in one block of time, create twelve social media posts and schedule them for later, right? Create all of the images that you need for whatever project you're working on for your uh, for your emails or for your social posts, create them all at once, right? And and make sure that these things are set up to send on your behalf when they need to send out so that you aren't falling into the trap of wasting time scrolling, trying to find inspiration and then ultimately spending all of your working hours chasing distractions, right? We've all had it happen to us. All right, so our engagement plan is going to uh, fall into the categories just as we did previously with team. This could be your customers, uh, as well as your brand partners. Determine the number of emails for the month or or per week, however many you might already be sending out. You want to make sure that you are doing as you were previously. If you are not already sending out emails to your team on a weekly basis, I would encourage you, if your goal is growth, to incorporate one email per week that goes out to your customers where you are inspiring them with maybe how you're using product this week. And then of course, if you have brand partners, you want to be sending out information to them as well. And just as you are inspiring your customers with product use, you want to inspire your brand partners with lifestyle. Here is what doing the work with Young Living has done for my life and I want to help you get that same benefit too, right? So make sure that you are planning, if you are working on growth phase here, to include that kind of engagement on an ongoing basis. We want to also determine the number of direct outreach and care calls we're going to make. We're going to keep this roughly the same. Our audience engagement, uh, this is going to uh, fall into again, basically the same uh, pattern that we saw with maintenance. We're going to determine the number of emails that we send to our list. If you don't have a list yet, and that's, you know, again, folks who have signed up on your website to hear from you, maybe about your blog posts or other things that you're doing who are not your customers. If you don't have that yet, don't worry about that just yet. You would be working on creating a funnel uh, in the project category, right? But if you do have a list and you are looking to grow, make sure that you are sending one email out per week to your audience, even if you're just pointing them to the social posts that you're making. Right? You always have a reason to engage. And do remember, of course, as well, for the people who are not Young Living, who are not using product, your audience here, who are not your team, make sure that what you're doing is inspiring curiosity and not just pitching and selling Young Living product. You're going to be talking to your team a little differently than you're talking to people who don't know yet that they need to be on your team, right? And then finally, you want to make sure that you know the number of posts that you plan to make per day or per week. And again, for engagement, you want to make sure that you are putting yourself out there to create more easy opportunities for you to share, which is the next phase we'll be talking about or the next category we'll be talking about. You do want to make sure that you are showing up on social media on a daily basis. All right, so our growth plan for our lead pipeline, the absolute most critical part of your business, this should account for seventy-five percent or more of the time you're allotting to the next month's plan. Okay? So here we're going to establish our goal of number of new customers or OGV, just like we did before. So I saw uh, one person said they wanted to enroll one new person a week, right? So that means four new customers being the goal uh, for the month of December. So from there, how many times do we need to share? What is our number of shares that we need to make to reach that goal? And um, and appointments to share. So shares and appointments to share are not the exact same thing. To get to your question, Alison. So sharing is what happens when you actually have an appointment, right? So sometimes shares can happen in more spontaneous ways, but we're talking about being being really intentional here. So I'm going to sit down with a person and consult with them, right? But there are certainly more passive ways to share. So there is a slight distinction. You certainly don't have to think too far into this. Ultimately, what you want to do prioritize is uh, is folks uh, who are actually sitting down with you because your best chance of getting somebody started with a three hundred OGV or greater loyalty order is for you to sit down and have a consult with that person. And that consult requires an appointment. Okay? All right, so uh, from there, again, uh, based on your past successes, estimate the number of conversations that you would need in order to set those appointments. And then our number of conversations that, and and this is our ultimate goal, right? So we're estimating so that we can write down, this is the number of conversations I want to make sure that I am starting and re-engaging with on a daily or weekly basis. Now, how you go about uh, reaching these numbers and uh, sort of what that activity looks like for you in last week's training, so the one before this on our YouTube channel, which was the one we put out for Thanksgiving week. This is something that I go into greater detail there. So if if you haven't seen it, definitely make sure that you check that out if you want greater clarity on creating momentum with this kind of activity. But ultimately, what you want to factor in here is that every single time you start a conversation, it's not going to lead straight to a share and then ultimately to uh, someone saying yes to Young Living, right? We need to factor in our um, you know, our our sort of uh, our our success rate with with how we are moving people in that direction. So we need a much greater volume of conversations in order to get the number of appointments that we want. And then ultimately, uh, for those appointments to lead to uh, someone saying, yes, I want to check out Young Living and then ultimately saying yes. And then ultimately saying, yes, I want to buy. Now let's talk about projects. If your goal is to grow your business. Then we want to be mindful of how much time we're spending on things that are not what we just talked about, right? That seventy-five percent critical stuff. So this work is going to account for twenty-five percent of your time or less, okay? So again, just like we did before, we're going to specify the projects that you want to complete this month. You could also again choose to pick up and continue with an in-progress priority project. Determine what is needed to complete the project, outline the steps or elements that are required to complete it. Gather any resources ahead of time so that you can stay focused on the work of completing the project. And not on, you know, running down your resources that you need. Break that down into separate categories, especially if it's going to be in get oiling. And that's again going to be, what are you going to say? That's your copy. What are you going to show? That's your images. And then how are you going to set it up and have it designed so that someone experiences it? So once we have determined our goal of growth or maintenance and. Decided what our numbers look like, right? So our percentages, what do we need to be doing? What are the things that we need to be making sure that we do in that time? Now we need to actually talk about the time of it all, right? So how much time do you know you have available to focus on work? In the coming weeks, right? I know we're talking about December now. This is a training that you could really come back and watch any time of year when you want to be thinking about how you manage your time. But how does this look for you, right? We're looking ahead. Can we be realistic? What does your hourly allotment of focused work time look like? What could you actually reasonably expect to be able to do? What we're going to do is we're going to block those windows of time off on a digital calendar. Now, I highly recommend, I haven't created a training on this, there are far better uh technical experts on time blocking and calendar blocking. That have free trainings on YouTube, right? So definitely check out all of the free resources that exist out there. I don't think that you need a paid resource for this. It is uh it's a pretty straightforward thing. Essentially, what you're doing is you're setting up a calendar for yourself. It could be the one that's built into that your favorite device. It could be a Google Calendar um that could, you know, show up cloud-based across all your devices, whatever that looks like for you. Block off those blocks of time. So if you know that between the hours of. You know, two PM and five PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you one hundred percent know that you've got that time to yourself, that you could work on stuff, block it off, right? So you're just going to go in and create those blocks. And we're going to do something with those later, but go ahead and create those blocks. You know, these are my available hours for the rest of the coming month. Now add those up. Get a total of those hours. And then we're going to add. The time to your plans, right? So here's what that could look like for you. I'll give you an example. So for the entire month, maybe you have ten hours a week or you are roughly. Going to be looking at uh over the course of the entire month, you have blocks of time that add up to forty hours, right? So for the entire month, engagement is going to look like spending ten hours of uh of time on engagement for the entire month. Now, inside of this ten hours, you're going to be creating all of your social posts. You're going to be creating and scheduling all of the emails that you're going to send out, right? And you are going to be factoring in the time that you'll be spending reaching out to existing customers and brand partners. To check in on them, if you're sending happy mail, whatever the maintenance of keeping your people engaged looks like. You're going to be spending a total of ten hours on that and it needs to be blocked off on your schedule accordingly, okay? If you are working on growing your business, engagement needs to be cut down to ten to five hours, right? And this again is an example, you can be flexible with this. For your lead pipeline, if you're in maintenance phase, twenty hours of your month. Is going to be spent on those activities that are initiating conversations, picking them back up, uh setting appointments. Having those sit downs where you're sharing and then ultimately signing up new customers. That needs to be, and this is fifty percent, right? If you've got forty hours for the month. If you are again, working on growing your business, you're going to be dedicating a bit more of your time to those lead pipeline activities. So that's thirty hours are going to be blocked off for those activities, to hit those goals of how many people did I reach out to today? How many people said yes and set an appointment with me? How many people saw Young Living and had an experience? Um and then how many people signed up, right? That's going to fall into that lead pipeline, those those activities. And you're going to spend thirty hours if you've got forty available and you're looking to grow. Now for your projects, for maintenance, if you are working on maintaining your business, you have a bit more time you can spend on your project. So that's ten hours for your month. And that's on creating your images in Canva, designing pages and get oiling. Setting up your uh your campaigns and get oiling uh to send out to leads after they opt in, right? Setting up your funnel, your member area, et cetera. Your growth activities are for 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 those of us who are working on growing the business. We are going to be spending considerably less time on projects. Because again, we're working on the things that move the needle forward in terms of our income, right? And so that means that that needs to take up more of our time, okay? So once we've got those things figured out, right? You know how much time you're going to be spending in the coming month? And you have allotted, based on those percentages, how many hours of each you are going to spend. You can then go back to those time blocks on your digital calendar and revise them. So that you are only working on one activity at a time. Okay, so what this would look like is if you have uh on Tuesdays for the next four weeks. You have the hours of seven AM to um. I will just say eleven AM, right? Seven AM till eleven AM, you have uh that span, those hours available. You're going to have maybe. In on one day, you'll have maybe an hour and a half of that time. That you will set aside to create all of your social posts for the month, right? And so you have have all the images made in that time, you write out everything that you want to say and you schedule them to be posted, right? In another block of time there, uh you may spend on social media, for instance, uh in the DMs. Uh or using your phone and calling people, you may spend an hour and a half of that period of time. Only on outreach, right? Outreach and uh and and looking for those available conversations. And then maybe the the next day, you have, maybe you have a thirty to thirty minute to an hour long. Window of availability on a daily basis or on the days that you're available, where you can take those appointments, right? Where if somebody says yes, if you can't meet right now, you do have a time that you can point them to, okay? Now, as I mentioned before, you do want to make sure that you are not doing your work. And simultaneously trying to find the resources that you need to do your work, right? So ahead of time, I encourage you to create a document for yourself with resources that you'll need to reference when you're doing your project work. Or if you know that you need um, you know, it's sort of a cheat sheet when you're sharing with someone. Because maybe you're newer to get uh to Young Living. You want to uh maybe have a little script there, right? So just have cheat sheets for yourself based on the type of work that you're going to do. If there are templates you know you want to use, just make sure you've got all of that stuff in one place. So you don't find yourself switching between tasks, right? So what we're essentially trying to do here is batch the kinds of work that we're doing. So our context isn't being uh continuously switched, right? So this means that you're turning off email because what you're doing right now has exactly zero to do with email. We are turning off social media, we're locking away our phone. Because what we're doing right now has nothing to do with social media or our phone. We have a time set on our schedule where we're going to go get into social media and do the work that we need to do there, such as scheduling our posts. That's a different period of time from when you are um in the DMs and initiating conversations, right? We're batching what we're doing. When we are creating a project and get oiling. We are going to do all of the work we need to do in Canva first, right? So that we have all of the images we need when we get to get oiling to set things up. We're going to get into uh write with AI and get whaling and come up with what we're going to say. Uh and create the things that we need to create, right? So we aren't going from Canva to get whaling to Facebook to here to there to your email, right? It's the switching of those contexts that really kills our productivity, right? The goal here is to stop multitasking. Because multitasking really is a primary killer of productivity, right? Now finally, we want to sanctify our schedule. We want to hold sacred the time that we have set aside to grow our business. So we want to create space for the work that we're doing. That means we're going to isolate ourselves when we're working physically and digitally as much as possible from distractions. There are incredible tools out there to uh sort of nanny you, if you will. I absolutely have a digital nanny app. It's called Rescue Time. I love it. I've used it for probably six years now. And uh if if you are creative in the work that you do and you want to shut off distractions during set periods of time. It's my favorite. It's really good. There's certainly others out there. So um you can uh set yourself up with those things. You could also, of course, isolate yourself physically. If it helps for you to leave the house and do this work from a laptop in a coffee shop, absolutely do it. If there's a room you could shut yourself in, do it, right? You also want to make sure that you're planning for breaks, right? So if you are blocking your schedule, then you want to make sure that you've got a nice little five to fifteen minute window. In between the work that you're doing um so that you aren't um totally exhausting yourself, right? You're getting up to stretch, walk around, make some tea, et cetera. If you don't know about the Pomodoro method, this is definitely something to check out. You're basically creating focused periods of work and then set periods of rest in between. I love using a like a kitchen timer, an egg timer. I have one that I actually keep on my desk for this purpose. And if you struggle with um with keeping attention and focus, this is a really great way to start building up those mental muscles. You also want to make sure you're being protective, not projective, be protective of your working hours. And that means you want to make sure that during your working hours, you're avoiding multitasking. And you're saying less yes often specifically to new commitments, new projects and uh and to appointments, right? Where possible, obviously, you want to be meeting and prioritizing meeting with the folks. Who are maybe newer customers who are really engaged with product, as well as folks, of course, who are not yet Young Living customers. That you have the opportunity to get started. Uh and then finally, you want to get your family on board to support these boundaries that you need. So let's recap what we've covered here. We want to establish our goals for the remainder of the year. Outline and quantify the actions needed to reach those goals. Then determine how much you will be working, how many hours for the next month. And how you'll allot that time based on what we've quantified here. We'll block our schedule to work on one category at a time. And then batch our work into like categories so that we can avoid multitasking and context switching. And then we're going to stick to our schedule. Good boundaries are good for you, right? Make sure, and I know a lot of us here, we are servant-hearted, we are servant-minded. We are people who do for others, right? Young Living has an extraordinary ability to attract people like this, right? A lot of yellow personalities. Um you have to understand that it is healthy. It is good for you. It is good self-care and it makes you a better steward of the experience for others. If you are holding to the boundaries that you set for yourself, that you are setting an example for people to follow. So make sure that you are taking care of you here and holding to your schedule as you create it. You put the time into creating a system like this and following it. Know that you are doing something for you. But if you have trouble doing things for you, know that doing this will make you better. To help make others better in the future, right? If if you have to trick yourself into making this for about someone else and for someone else, understand that if you get good at this, you will be a better leader. And you will be able to serve more people more effectively, okay? So if you're ready to create your best year yet, we have what you need to get it all done. Our Black Friday specials have been extended through this Friday tomorrow, as we are creating this right now on Thursday. So with get oiling, you know that you'll find everything that you need under one roof. And this Black Friday, you will just find the best deal on business tools. You'll also find the how-to and support to put them to smart use. So stick around and learn how you can score big this season and set yourself up for your best year yet. Whether you're just getting started or you are already a valued member of our community. We have something for you regardless of who you are. So here's some of what we're giving away. If you don't know about this already, we are giving away our Young Living Groups Masterclass. The Brand My Business Workshop, Email Marketing Mastery, Marketing Mastery Workshop, Personal Branding Intensive. And one-on-one calls with our experts. And you could see that these add up to a great deal of value. If you have not gotten started with get whaling yet, understand that there, yes, is a lot to learn. But we've already created the tools to help you, so you are never lost and you are never alone. You have what you need regardless of where you are and what project you want to start on next. We are also giving away custom website domains, two-way texting for free, custom domains. A month of get oiling and unlimited vaults and classes, as well as bonus marketing credits for the month for the life of your account. That is both for annual and for monthly plans. If you're new to get oiling, these are the things that you're going to get when you get started at any plan level. We've got our Groups Masterclass, which you may be familiar with. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. We do have a a recording of this that we did last week as well, but I just want to kind of make sure you guys see this, right? This is incredible for you if you want to move your people off of Facebook and serve them in a private space on your own website. The Brand My Business Workshop has everything that you need to take the guesswork out of creating your brand and expressing it with a gorgeous website, including templates. Email Marketing Mastery will set you up. This is one of the most important things that you need to know how to do if you're growing a business online. And you will find very, very few folks who are teaching to the depth and degree that I do in this course. Uh and we're giving it away for free. Marketing Mastery Workshop teaches you how to tie everything together with smart business systems so that you can run your business the way you want. And that's not all. Uh at Basic and Above for a monthly plan, we've got free two-way texting, three months of unlimited vaults. And classes and two hundred extra marketing credits per month for the life of your account, and it's a dollar for your first month. And if you're looking for more serious growth and savings when you get started. Or upgrade to an annual plan by tomorrow when this closes. You can also get access to the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. Where you'll dig deep to discover and launch the brand and business you were meant to lead. It includes four in-depth modules and we've got communication open in there. So if you need support and feedback, you've got access to it. And when you get started at Basic and Above for Annual, you get a month of get oiling for free. You're getting the word out with free two-way texting for a whole year. Also, for a whole year, you get unlimited vaults and classes. You have a thousand marketing credits per month for life. And you get a free domain name and of course, access to the Personal Branding Intensive. And our annual plans do come with a thirty-day money-back guarantee. Now, we are also offering one-on-one tech and strategy consults where you can work with us one-on-one. And this is available to new annual pro and diamond memberships. So you can get over to get oiling.com now to learn more and get started with these. Now, for those of you who I assume is most of us here on the live call, if you already use and love get oiling. We have a three-for-three promo that you're going to want to check out. And this ends tomorrow, so let's get the ball rolling on this. You can win up to three one-on-one calls with our experts. It's a six hundred dollar value. When you refer at least three friends to your get oil to get oiling using your referral link during this month. If they are still around in January, you're going to get three private calls with Pam or one call with me, right? So you've got the opportunity to take advantage of this. And and this is what I really want to make sure you guys see here, the New Year Level Up Bootcamp. This is a six-week intensive that's designed to launch your business into momentum in the new year. We're going to position ourselves to attract opportunity. We're going to learn better how to manage our time and resources for maximum leverage. So imagine taking what we talked about here today, beginning hands-on help and accountability support to get you into action with those steps. And then, of course, we are going to take this all to the next level. We're going to get those growth goals in place and we are going to take massive action toward them. This is not a sit around and watch a bunch of videos bootcamp. This is a meet you where you are and get you into the action that you need to be taking. And this is only available to existing get oiling customers. You will find and it will disappear after tomorrow. You will find when you log into your dashboard, a link up at the top, you can click it and you can learn more. There's a video there uh and and you can join in while it is still available. So we look forward to working with you on this in the new year, right? So we are so very excited to offer these promos to you. This is all going to be available to you if you get started in the bootcamp. And of course, we hope that you will uh take advantage of that. And all of these incredible things that we are offering uh during this uh promotion, which does end tomorrow. All right, so the seats are limited for the bootcamp, so definitely check out that link in your dashboard. And if you want to learn more about the specials we're offering, you can just go to get oiling.com. And so long as they're live, you're going to see links there as well as additional information to help you get started. So forgive me, I know I did kind of blow through that last bit there, but time is running out and this was a. So forgive me, I know I did kind of blow through that last bit there, but time is running out and this was a pretty immediate training today. We've got some questions and then Rebecca is signed up for a live work review, so I'll be bringing you out here in just a moment. All right, Allison, more examples of projects you're talking about. So if you are looking for support with a specific project, if you have a goal in mind to create a specific thing, that could be a tool for your business, that could be a a new way of operating, whatever that looks like. You can either consult our training resources or you could even post in our Facebook group or reach out to support. So if, for instance, you want to have a system where you are offering and sending out samples and maybe you're automating the information, like how you get their address and so on, then you you're basically going to want to say, okay, this is what I want to do, right? And you can consult your resources or you could reach out to our team and they can help you outline, well, you need a this and a this and a that, right? So that you can break it down. And and yes, you may need to to sit, you may need to offer people the opportunity to sit down with you ten times in order for them to say yes. And not every time you sit down with somebody, are they going to necessarily say that they're open? I mean, how many of us have sat down with someone that we thought might have been ready? But when you said, I would love to show you, if I could show you a way to get this benefit, where they've been like, eh, yeah, maybe not, right? Sometimes that doesn't happen. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about sort of the parsing of terms there. Do you divide this up into one day or maybe one day is all engagement, another day is all lead pipeline? I would not divide it all up into one day, Allison, because that gives you the opportunity to stuff too many things of different categories into one block of time. I would say maybe have your goal be sure to knock out all of the the social posts. Maybe you could do that in a day. So you're going to set aside a specific block of time for that. But you also want to make sure you've got a little bit of time in that day to take appointments, for instance. But make sure that you are breaking those down and specifying them. Jolene had a question on batching and gathering content and verbiage. Where or what apps or ways to gather the images and text in one place that's easy to upload like notes? I don't find pages to be the easiest to hold images. So I don't actually hold this all in one place, actually, Jolene. There are certainly ways to do it. But what you want to do is just establish a naming convention, right? So essentially what this would look like, and this is how I do it. I go into Canva and I create all of the images that I know that I need. And I put them into a folder on my device that is titled for the resource that I'm creating, right? So if I am creating a funnel, the funnel is going to have a name. It's going to be named that in Get Oiling, right? And so all the images that I create for that funnel, I'm going to put into a folder on my device with that name. I'm going to use that same name to title a note. I like using the Notes app on Mac, but you could use certainly Pages or other types of note-taking applications. But whatever you do, name the file the same thing. So that way you just search for the name of it and you can find everything that's needed. And then on an ongoing basis, if you do need to make modifications or consult any of the work that you did previously, it's going to be named the same thing and stored on your device with the same name that's in your Get Oiling system for that resource. So, so yeah, just establish a clear naming convention. So if this is going to be the the Yoga Funnel, right, then it's going to be a file called Yoga Funnel Images. It's going to be the the file called Yoga Funnel Copy. And then, of course, you'll have Yoga Funnel Landing Page, Yoga Funnel Lead Magnet, right? However, it is that you want to set that up inside of your Get Oiling account. And thank you for that question. All right, Rebecca, thank you so much for your patience. Let me bring you out to chat. Welcome. And thanks for coming on today. How can we help?
Hi, Coach Ashley. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so what I'm looking to do is I I want to have a free masterclass and I'm looking to create a landing page with, you know, registration and then for an email campaign. And I would like to have where I could repeat the same class, right? And when people when I do a discovery call, I want to be able to then put them into like another email campaign. So I think those are two separate things. But when I started to do the the landing page with the registration, I have two people signed up because I'm in a business group and we're helping each other. We're doing a practice run. I don't have anything else set up and my page looks a little embarrassing because what I really want to do is do one image that is my Facebook header and I wanted to bring that over into the same image into the landing page.
Okay.
And it didn't quite work that way. And then I think I started to get a little balled up with everything I need to do. So I just need some help getting myself, looking at that page and then getting myself into the direction I need to go.
Okay. Fantastic. We can do that. So is this the landing page?
It is.
Okay, so what I would recommend actually doing here is I would, I would actually recommend maybe taking some of, so basically you're going to go into your your Canva and and what I would recommend is maybe modifying this image to put a little bit less information on it. And potentially because of the way our landing pages are designed, maybe making it more of like a square image. I would also recommend here as well. And this is my personal preference, but I find that these actually look quite nice. This simple short form is going to afford you a good amount of real estate. For the image, you can actually see where it's highlighted here. A nice square image is going to be big here and it will look good. And you can include some text, but you do still have the space here for your call to action. So the example that we have here, what I would do is in your Canva, definitely have this here with a free online. You don't necessarily have to have the online masterclass. You could actually put that into the copy up above the form, so free online masterclass, then put the date, right? And then put register below. And so you can actually keep maybe the three steps to inner peace and and then these these bullet points, right? And you could even put like this attention overwhelm Christian Moms. That could be something that goes up in the top, right? So this, this would be an example of maybe not multi-purposeing the exact same image from Canva, but but using it as a base to kind of transform it into something slightly different that works.
When you say, when you say putting that overwhelm Christian Moms up on the top, where were you talking about the top?
It would be like up here or if we used this other, a little bit less visually busy one here, then you could, you could actually put that up here.
Oh, okay. I think I was a little confused as to what I could put where on this this page.
Yeah. So I mean, you could put it here, right? So you could also put that here instead. And then we could say, oops, we want to make sure that that is. There we go. And then, you know, we could say, join the masterclass, right? Or enter your info below to save your seat, right? You do want to make sure that you have a call to action that that joins your your form here.
Is there other places on that simple short form to put copy or is it basically across the top and then the picture?
So on the simple, the simple short form, that's the case. But you could also maybe use like a two or three-part form. And these are really nice if you want to kind of tell more of a story, right? So if you want to say a little something up here, when they hit this button, it does pop them down to the one at the bottom. Or they could continue scrolling and see this next part. The other option, depending on how much information you want to provide, would be to actually just create a page, right? And there is one. This page right here is pretty perfect, this Jenna homepage template. This is pretty perfect for 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 workshops, masterclasses, webinars, things like that. So you could actually extrapolate the information from that image and, you know, some of the same colors, et cetera, and 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 basically draw it out into a more full page where you can put more copy.
I see. Okay. I think for now I'm going to keep it simple.
Yeah.
And the, once they register. So that helps me out with getting that page more pretty. Thank you for that idea.
For sure.
Once they register, I think what I have set up now is just the confirmation. I don't have any reminder or.
Okay. Yeah, so we're going to send them to, so we're going to show this registration and then we're going to send them to your homepage, okay? And then the campaign is here.
And then it says the website homepage. See, this is where I got a little confused. I didn't really set anything up in my website, so I don't know even know what that looks like.
So that is going to be actually if we go to customize my site or really anywhere in your dashboard, you can click View My Site and you can see whatever is set up and it's probably going to be a built-in theme if you haven't selected anything else. So and you can modify what that looks like here. But if you're just wanting to, if you're wanting to send them to say like a confirmation page, which is, that's typically going to be my recommendation. If you have somebody register for something, you want to send them to a page that says, hey, you've successfully registered. I'm so excited to see you, et cetera. Check your email. I've just sent you something. And so what that would look like here is we've got this information. We would be sending them instead to another page. So let's add a new page. And we'll create a confirmation page. And so this one will be, we'll do this. And then we'll just go ahead and use that same image that you've uploaded there. Right? So your registered is what we'll put here. Or your receipt is saved. And then we'll say, check your email now. I just sent you something. If you don't see an email from me within the next thirty minutes, get in touch. And then we'll just put like a contact me here. So this is just super, super simple. They know what they just signed up for. We're seeing that here as well. And of course, they know that they need to check their email. And we're going to call this the, what was the name of this? It's Three Steps to Inner Peace.
Yeah, you can just do Three Steps to Inner Peace because I think I'm going to change it.
Okay.
Like it's shorter. Masterclass, you could keep masterclass, I guess.
Okay. All right, that's going to be available by link only. And we'll save that page. Okay, so this, I'm going to refresh this here real quick. And here we can actually go add that confirmation. Right? So it's going to send them there. And then it's going to send them to, they're going to get that campaign as well. So the campaign that you have created does not yet have a message.
They didn't really do it.
So this is where we're going to say, your seat is saved. And this is the message that you're going to send. It's going to go out immediately. Maybe you're going to reiterate details. And then any calls to action, right? So invite a friend, right? Hit reply. Right? So you're going to want to include that information there. And then do you have a date for this event?
December fifth.
Okay, so then what we'll do here is if the event is on December fifth, we want to send them a reminder the day before. So we're going to start the campaign on the third. So we'll add a message and on day one, we'll say, reminder, our masterclass is tomorrow and this is going to be details, call to action, et cetera, right? And you can see that that's going to send out on the fourth and you may want to, that's going to go out at five o'clock central. And then the final thing, because I think, yeah, it looks like you aren't on the plan level that has, let me see, is there a specific? I don't think you have the time. Yeah. So basically what you're going to want to do is for the people who are tagged here. So that's going to be Inner Peace Masterclass. You'll want to schedule an email to those people like an hour before you're live. So that's going to be the fifth, one thirty to two thirty Eastern. So then basically you're going to want to, from your dashboard, we will create. And what is that called? Inner Peace Masterclass. We'll write an email and then we're going to schedule that for the fifth at twelve thirty Eastern time. And that's an hour before. And so that's going to be, we're live in an hour. You'll put your Zoom link, right?
Right, yeah, because I'm only giving them the Zoom link once they've registered, so.
Yeah, so that's going to go out. Maybe you can put that in that sec, this this reminder email that goes out, right? So that's going to remind them of the date and time. Maybe the Zoom link is in there as well. But then this one that you've scheduled is also going to have the Zoom link. We're live in an hour. And then we could even say Zoom link inside.
Okay.
Right?
I'm sorry, when they do the confirmation page, that is not an email. They're just getting something popping up that says you've confirmed, you're confirmed.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, yeah. So, so on that landing page, let me go back over here to our landing pages. I'm actually going to remove that confirmation message because they're going to be going to a confirmation page, right? So it's essentially, and I'll show you what this looks like. So if we go to view this and we put in information and we definitely want to make sure you have copy on that button. It's, you can see the confirmation is here, but it's telling me to check the email, right? And so the first message that I'm going to receive is this one that says, hey, your seat is saved, right? And then I won't get another one until the day before the masterclass. And then the day of the masterclass, and this is why we're scheduling this. At this point, everybody who's tagged, who has signed up on that landing page is going to receive what is in this message. And that's going to be an email.
Yeah, so even if they signed up that morning, they're going to, okay.
Yep. Now, so long as they sign up before it goes out.
Okay, I see. Now, when you signed up there and said, yes, please send me more info, does that do anything?
Like, um, you know?
I mean, that tells me that I can send them more info, but it doesn't really set them up on like a newsletter or anything like that, right?
Right. Actually, hey, Greg, can, can, this is actually a question that I guess I've never asked. Does it do anything in our system? I know it's where we are basically saying, I have, you know, I give you permission to email me, right? Does it do anything in the system?
If, sorry, I was, what can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. So, no worries, no worries. So this, right? If somebody checks or unchecks this, does it do anything different to a contact?
Yeah, so on the, actually on, on the landing page, this is, there is no such box unless you make one on the actual page builder. On the landing page, really all it does, it adds the contact in there. If they don't check the box, it will not send them the campaign. So, I mean, basically you want to word it in a way that they obviously will probably want to check it to get whatever it is that they're looking for, otherwise it just goes to your contact manager.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay. All right. So yes, we want to have some specific language here and then we want to say, save my seat. Want to make sure the button has copy there. But yeah, so once, once that's done, then obviously they're going to check that box. They're going to leave it checked and and then they're going to receive those messages.
Okay.
Do you want me to to go ahead and and save this draft here for you in your messages? So you can just go back and modify it?
Yeah, I'll go back and modify it. And I need to go back. When I modify that picture, am I on the simple form there or not?
The landing page that you are using there is not. And you could use whichever one that you want. I have, I have a personal preference for the simple short form and the two and three-part forms just because like there's, it's it's just less visually busy. And you don't have to worry quite as much about how well, you know, things overlap with the different forms. Those are my personal preferences and it just allows you to keep things a little simpler visually.
Okay. So now there's two people that I got an email notification saying that they signed up. So they're in my, see, well, right now it's, I have originally people from Young Living, but now what I'm doing is this masterclass is is different, has to do more with coaching and AFT.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how to, I don't necessarily want them to go to my website and and I mean, even the registration page says Get Oiling on it. And I don't know if it has to say that. You know what I'm talking about?
The registration page says Get Oiling?
No, when. No, when the link, the link will say it.
Oh, right, yeah, because you, you don't have a custom domain yet, right?
Okay, so what I would need is a custom domain in order to have it say something different. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, so, so those people that are in, they're tagged, they're, uh, they're automatically signed up for the campaign? Or are they not right now?
Uh, it looks like they are signed up for the campaign. So if they would have registered on that landing page, uh, you can actually see because the campaign is connected to the landing page. You can, you can see that there, those three contacts are right here. For the sake of, of their information privacy, I don't want to like go and explore that page. Uh, but you can also go into your contacts and search for the tag that you applied as well.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to verify that. Okay, good. Okay, um, let's see. So if I wanted to send out follow-up campaigns or a newsletter of such, that's going to be a completely different. I'm going to be setting up a brand new campaign, right? So instead of a campaign for a newsletter.
So you absolutely can go ahead and, um, and, and send them a, an additional message. Just, just remember the timing here. So maybe a follow-up, since you're going to be doing this in the middle of the day. You could actually on the fifth, uh, have, you know, a recap, right? So you're going to want to make sure, just by the way, if you're going to be using the campaign for this, that you have it all done and you're going to want to reapply it to those other two people. Because for instance, when they signed up, um, there weren't any messages in this campaign. So they're not going to receive them. Because they're, they're going to get the campaign that they signed up for when they signed up for it. So the campaign they signed up for, those, those two people, uh, signed up for a campaign with zero messages, which means they're getting zero messages. So just as a final step, after you've decided everything that's going to go into this campaign, you can just remove, because they haven't gotten any emails from you anyway. You can remove them from the campaign and then re-add them to it. And that way they'll get all of these messages. But what I was going to say is you could add a message here and send it on day two. So that'll send on December 5th at 5:00 PM Central. So it's 6:00 PM Eastern. And so there you can say, you know, and you're going to write this ahead of time. So great to meet everybody on the call today. Here we talked about X, Y, and Z thing. If you would like to, and this is where you can maybe offer that call with you, right? Go here, right? That's, and, and that additional message, you would be, um, you would be offering whatever link or hit reply or whatever that call to action might be.
Right, so link to Calendly or something like that.
Exactly.
And if I wanted it to go out closer to after the masterclass, then I would need to do a scheduled email. Is that right?
Well, actually because of how you've timed it, so the time of day that this sends automatically is 5:00 PM Central. So you could actually, that's the same day as the masterclass. It would just send automatically at six o'clock Eastern, right? So you could add an additional campaign message to send on day two. And, and then that would actually be handled. But you do have the opportunity as well to, to schedule if, if that's something that you prefer to do. If you want to schedule it, just like we're scheduling the reminder.
And that's where I would could put, if you would like to join newsletter, then I would put a link to, um, another campaign that's my newsletter.
Yeah, so the newsletter, so the way newsletters work, uh, is.
Or blog, I guess you might call it, I'm not sure.
Sure, yeah, so if, if you're planning on sending out communications on, on an ongoing basis, uh, and it's stuff that you are, it's, you're incapable of writing it like infinitely in advance, right? And that's how newsletters tend to work. Then what you're going to want to do is, um, you're essentially going to replicate a funnel, but with an automation. And what that means is you're going to create a new campaign that's going to, just like you did here, have a day zero message that says you're signed up for my updates. I'm so excited to keep you, you know, up to date with all the things I'm doing. Here's a link to my blog in the meantime, or my social or whatever. And you're going to have that one campaign with one message that is going to opt them in for your newsletter. And what you're going to do is you're going to go into contact settings here. And in automations, you're going to, um, uh, add an automation. And this is going to be add to newsletter from email. And we're going to tag them with whatever your newsletter tag is. And add that as an action. And then we're going to add your campaign. Uh, and obviously we don't have that here. You would make that one campaign just with the, hey, you've signed up. I'm so excited to keep you in the loop. And then under advanced options, I would encourage you to, um, create an additional confirmation page, like the one we created today, uh, that just confirms that they've signed up for your updates. Maybe has a link to your blog, basically repeating some of the same information that's in your email. And then on an ongoing basis, you're going to be filtering your contacts for this newsletter tag, right? And then you're going to be scheduling or sending out those emails that go out to those people, right? So, you know, you can't write a campaign right now that knows the blog post. You're going to write a year from now. Those are going to be things that you handle via blog, uh, via broadcasts. But to opt people into that list to get those broadcasts, you could use this. And then ultimately what you'll do is you'll copy this. And in that, um, in this campaign that we were just working on, uh, which is the, um, let's go back. Here we go. So I'll add our day two message. Uh, thanks for attending. Uh, and then here we could say, head over here to book a call. And then we could say, want to, um, get, uh, updates from me about new blog posts, et cetera. Click here. And actually, instead of saying click here, you would go to your automations list, right? Right here, and you would, I don't have, we don't have it created, right? Because we don't have the campaign made yet, but you would just pop that here. And it just becomes a link that they click. So from this campaign, they click it. And now a new campaign is applied and a tag is applied. And ideally you're sending them to a page that says that your, your preferences have been updated or you're signed up for my newsletter, et cetera.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'm just trying to get myself prepared for when I, I want to repeat the masterclasses and I want to have the system set up. And I was getting all boggled up because I want to count for people who, they're going to make the, do the discovery call. And if they end up not sticking with me, I want them on the newsletter if they want to be. But I, uh, the people who do sign up are going to be part of a year-long program where I'll be doing Zoom calls and classes. So that's the other part of my, um, oh, I know the other question I had for you. Oh my gosh, so the AFT oils.
Okay.
How do I have them, exactly, have a wishlist set up? I, would I just do that, that oil link and put it into when they do sign up?
So if you created a wishlist in Young Living and you have a link to that, then you could simply put that wishlist link in an email. And since wish lists are attached to your Young Living account, when they purchase from that wishlist, they become your customer. So you don't have to worry about using any other kind of special features to create those links.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate your time. Yeah, and I appreciate the training today. That was really good.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad. I hope it helps you and, uh, yeah, keep us up to speed on, on what you're working on. We're really excited to see you grow with this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for sticking around. I am so excited to see what you do with what you've learned today. If you have not yet, head over into your Get Oiling dashboard right now. I'm going to show you exactly where you want to go. It is right over here, still in your account, Rebecca. I promise I'm not going to do anything crazy. If you go to your dashboard here, this, right here, login, right now. Go check this out, learn more and get started. When you're on this page, there's a video you can watch if you want details, right? And then once you have seen some of this, you'll be able to actually say yes and get started with this bootcamp we're going to be launching in January. So we are so excited to work with you guys. Absolutely, head over and take advantage of this while it is still available. Doors close on this tomorrow. So again, grateful to have you with you, with us here as we are each week. We'll be back next week, same time. Till then, have a great week, everybody. Take care.